While listening to order the top of select board, it's September fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and we're in the Donnelay Russell Meeting Room. Means rise to the pledge of allegiance.
Quietly, the reasons to declare the United States of America and keep a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Danny, will you call a roll, please?
I will. Roll and task.
It's everyone.
So I may or may not be here.
You want to mute yourself? And spazin' out.
Perfect.
Looks like Patty's on and off, so I'll finish the roll.
Please, sir.
Ryan Holmes.
Shoot, shoot.
Oh, there she is again.
That one came through good.
All right, that works every time. Roll and task.
I think somebody bombed his room or something.
Ann Callahan.
Very brilliant. Ann Callahan.
She's absent, excuse.
Thank you, Ann Callahan.
Here.
Ryan Holmes.
Here.
Matt Nixon.
Present.
All present except very brilliant, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, town manager's report.
As of tonight, the following candidates for office have taken up papers and returned them for the two open select board seats. Michael Labby at Western Avenue and David Kenny at Middlesex Road. Incumbent Haley Coolus of Middlesex Road is the only person to take out and return papers for the open MSAD seventy-five school board seat. The deadline for returning papers for all three positions is tomorrow at three P M. The Tedford Road culvert construction is now underway and expected to be complete by the end of October. Until September twelfth, M D O T continues to take comment on the proposed Route one ninety-six bypass widening. There's an on-demand public hearing link on the public notices section of the front page of our website. Hopefully, I don't get a dirty look here from our local American Legion commander for this next one. But American Legion Post twenty-one in Brunswick is having a Veteran and Community Connection Expo on September nineteenth from ten A M. to two P M. They asked us to help spread the word. The event will have valuable resources for veterans from federal, state, and local organizations, mental health services, safe storage, education, and more. But I'm sure Topson Legion would also help veterans.
We're gonna be there.
One of them too. One of them.
If you have any significant ash trees you wish to protect, it might be time to talk to an arborist. Emerald Ash Forerun has been detected near the Andrus Goggin River in a couple of spots. We've had the ash trees at Forside Field Complex that separate the road from the playing fields injected to hopefully protect them. Save the date, C and P will hold an informational meeting for planned improvements for Section thirty-one, which is a transmission line in the Topsom Fire Mall area. The hearing will be, or the informational meeting, will be here at Town Hall on September twenty-fourth at six P M. More info to come next week and will be placed on the public notice section of the town website. And finally, everyone's favorite time of year, tax bills should be in the mail by the end of next week with the first insolvent due October fifteenth.
Very good, thank you. All right, next up, boards committee reports, nothing to this meeting, public comment. Anybody? No? Correspondence? None I'm aware of. Adjustments to the agenda, none. Consent calendar, approval of the minutes of the regular select board meeting held August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-five, excuse me.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the select board meeting from August twenty-first, twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Moving second at all in favor?
By the understanding that my dog is stupid.
What? Oh, it was a, that was an animal-related issue. Understandable. Public hearings, none tonight, finished business, nothing, old business, nothing. On to new business, twenty-five dash sixty-nine. Consideration of any appropriate action to authorize the memorandum of understanding regarding maintenance of Autobahn Way by and between Central Topsom Associates Two L L C and the Town of Topsom as written in the document attached to the memo provided to the select board by the Topsom Planning Department dated September fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and authorize staff to approve minor adjustments to dates, fields, within the agreement as appropriate to its functional administration.
And our planner, Josh Franklin, is here to address this.
Good evening, Josh.
Good evening, Nate. Yes, so basically, we're just here to ask, I'm just here to ask the select board to authorize the, it's an understanding. Okay, so, so the beginning, on June twelfth, the Topsom Planning Board approved the site plan application for the realignment and improvement of Autobahn Way. So currently, the Highland Green neighborhood is primarily accessed via Village Drive, and it has secondary access from K and M Drive. Autobahn Way provides another potential emergency accessway to the approved assisted level facility. So in order to ensure safe access for emergency vehicles at a level that's satisfactory to the fire chief. And it was placed as one of the conditions, the application's approval, that the applicants provide maintenance for Autobahn Way. And so they provided the maintenance agreement, which is attached to the memo. We've had the, we've had both the fire chief and the town's peer review engineer, Tom Sossier, have a look at the, the understanding, and they do find returns acceptable. So, yeah, let's just check one. If you guys can provide authorization for that.
Any other questions?
It's pretty easy, isn't it? So if you look at the agreement, the last stipulation, termination, four, part four, the party's here to agree that the road is intended to become a public way of completion. CTA's obligation here under shall cease and dematerial shall become null, void, upon dedication of the road to the town. The acceptance are the same. So the way this reads, and I'm probably wrong here, but it's almost like the only time that this agreement would be enforced would be when they finish the road, the next town meeting, that accurate.
So the, basically, the road hasn't been, we don't know when this will, this will be built. So it goes into effect as soon as they get their occupancy, once that's built. So once four D is built and they get occupancy, they, they have to follow this agreement to maintain four D two levels as shown. Following that, they can, on their own timeline, request that the town take the road. And should the road accept it, then at that point, this agreement will cease to be in effect.
Okay, be real quick. Is the proposed living facility, assisted living facility a nonprofit or is it a full profit?
Probably full profit, because the rest of the Highland Green is full profit.
Oh, that means they're paying taxes.
Right. It's actually part of the land that's completely split there.
All right, that's all I got.
Yeah, the rest is.
So as far as the public way being accepted, there's no ability of the town.
And this doesn't say guarantee it will be accepted. If you remember the select board report I gave you, I think for the last meeting, I showed you a beautifully drawn sketch of ways to try to connect our trails and stuff. Autobahn Way would be an important way of connecting Village Drive to Tedford Road and the rail trail, or the trail that could be the. So there certainly, I think, would be interest in the town if they built it to specs and had it, like, say, the part of K and M that used to be Mountain Road and has the multimodal path and all that. I think there would be interest in our part to help work on our trail network. So, but if it doesn't get accepted at town meeting, then this agreement would continue.
Okay.
I guess one other question, and this is the most important.
So K and M finally got fixed this month, right? Is there some on, I don't think they're going to, is there some kind of agreement with K and M, the owner of K and M, similar to this, where they have to maintain it to a certain?
No, because they haven't had to go to the planning board.
And that's why it was a moving scape, right? Much appreciated chiefs for that, thank you. You both are good, it's done. All right, now I'm Mike.
Rick, with your motion?
Sure, I make a motion that the select board authorize the memorandum of understanding regarding, regarding maintenance of Autobahn Way by and between Central Topsom Associates Two L L C and the Town of Topsom as written in the document attached to the memo provided to the select board by the Topsom Planning Department dated September fourth, two thousand twenty-five, and authorize staff to approve minor adjustments to dates and fields within the agreement as appropriate to its functional administration.
Same.
Moving second at all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, twenty-five, seven. Consideration of any appropriate action to allow the police chief to apply for two grants through the main Bureau of Highway Safety.
Good evening, Mark Hagan, chief of police. So we would like to apply for the following federal grants that will actually be administered through the main Bureau of Highway Safety. There's a speed enforcement grant, there's a drug recognition call-out grant, and a drive sober or get pulled over grant. Our intent would be to apply for a total of twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. That would be broken down into the following. We would try to do twenty-four hour speed enforcement overtime details. We would try to do ten, well, the drug recognition call-outs. We have a certified drug recognition officer, and when they get called out to assist other agencies, right now, we have the burden of paying the overtime. But if we get this grant, then we could cover the call-outs for that officer through the grant. And then we also would like to apply for thirteen four-hour drive sober, get pulled over overtime details. So this funding would allow us to run proactive enforcement details throughout the year. The grants will cover from September fifteenth of this year to October first of two thousand twenty-six. And I should tell you, there is a twenty percent in-kind match. However, that is actually covered by the time that Lieutenant Collins would spend actually just administering the grant. So it would be any actual cash, any actual cash in-kind match for us. So we would like to apply for these grants and if you have permission.
And it's three, not two, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. It's a motion.
This one started on September fifteenth.
In theory, well, that's when the grants would be open, and we won't have time to get, to get ready that soon, we'd probably be starting on two hundred.
And the funding has come through, both of us?
So we've been told by the state.
Yes, they're, they're the ones who just were interested.
All right. Any other questions? Promotion?
I make a motion to allow the police chief to apply for three grants through the main Bureau of Highway Safety. Eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents to cover the twenty-four hour, four hour speed enforcement overtime details, two thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents to cover ten drug recognition call-outs, and nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents to cover thirteen four-hour drive sober overtime details.
Same.
Moving second at all in favor?
Thank you. No, go anywhere, sir. I'm obviously in ready.
All right, twenty-five, seventy-one. Consideration of any appropriate action to award the bid for a new police cruiser.
So we were approved in this year's budget to purchase one new patrol cruiser. In keeping with our fleet, we requested bids for a black Ford S U V police package interceptor. In an effort to be flexible, we asked for people to give us quotes for anything they had on stock that matched our requirements, as well as what they may already be ordering or were about to order. So we did get six, six different bids, two from the same cooler, because they had something in stock and they were also ordering vehicles. So the low bid came in with Casco Bay Ford in Yarmouth at thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars with a, with a trade-in for a car that we have that we'd like to get rid of that, it already has a hundred and thirty-six thousand miles on it. So we would, we'd like to go with the Casco Bay Ford bid, and we're gonna go with a hybrid.
Do we need two motions? One for approval of trading in the other vehicle, as well as approval for purchase of this vehicle? Or is it just one? Or do we even need to include the trade-in?
Well, it changes the price by five thousand dollars.
Right, but it.
You could do it in one motion, but it would include the trade-in.
Okay.
Great, very emotional.
I would move that we allow the purchase of a two thousand twenty-six hybrid police interceptor from Casco Bay Ford in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That is a price after a trade-in of an old cruiser in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Same.
Moving second at all in favor? First.
Thank you very much.
On to twenty-five, seventy-two. Consideration of any appropriate action to award Industrial Protection Services L L C, I P S, the bid for the purchase of Scott Airbacks and face masks in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, two hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Good evening, Mr. Ball, our chief. This is phase two of replacing our Airbacks and bottles. We did bottles a couple of years ago. There's two Scott vendors, and we had to go with Scott Airbacks, because we have Scott bottles. So that was the model that we had to go with. The two vendors in our region both gave us prices, I P S two thirteen, nine eighty-five, fire tech was two twenty-four, two thirty-five. Same exact number of that, same exact factor face mask, so there's no difference between what we requested. So my recommendations go with one that's cheaper.
Would we have a budget for this?
Two thirty-something, two thirty-two, I recall.
Very perfect. Any other questions? All right, motion please.
I make a motion to award Industrial Protection Services L L C the bid for the purchase of Scott Airbacks and face masks in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Same.
Moving second at all in favor?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, twenty-five, seventy-three. Consideration of any appropriate action to apply and accept a main municipal grant application for public works facility upgrade.
Hi, good evening, Chad Emerson, assistant town manager. Tonight, we're seeking permission to apply for and accept that awarded a three thousand dollar in the labor risk reduction grant. The grant is for upgrades to the public safety firearm system slash security system at the Department of Public Works. The backs of the grant is three thousand dollars for a project that's gonna be about sixty-five hundred, roughly, with the balance being absorbed through the Department of Public Works facilities budget. The highlights of the project will be the improvement of the detection system within the, within the building and the alarm system, as well as monitoring upgrades. Early detection, better protection of assets. If awarded, we'd like to proceed with cutting your securities at the third hundred. Do you have any questions?
Point worth, what would the monthly be for cutting in?
So monthly is sixty-five dollars we're cutting in, so it's approximately a fourteen-dollar increase that we'll pay now. Of all the maintenance costs that we've been paying, we'd have a net increase roughly of two, three hundred dollars a year.
Thank you. No, I don't, do we ever authorize people to apply for and accept a grant at the same time?
You can.
No. They never have, they've always been applied, and then they come back and want to go forward and accept. But for this, I'm fine with that, you guys are, I think it's a difficult, historic practice, so we're the most one who has to back the second time, give the grant to the world and accept it if there are any changes to the order anything. About three grand here, so.
Half a two weeks away, I'm bigger.
Well, I move to a lot, oh, second question.
No, you're on roll.
Cool, I'm moving allow staff to apply for and accept if awarded. And I couldn't get a column of my certain name, it doesn't probably, I'm trying to say this, a three thousand dollar risk reduction grant provided by N M A for the improvement of security and smoke detection monitoring at Topsom Public Works. Second.
Moving second at all in favor? Thank you. All right, twenty-five, seventy-four. Consideration of any appropriate action to donate three derelict light poles to the American Legion Post two oh two to be used to fly the American flag, P O W, M I A flag, and the main flag at their post.
Good evening, select board members. I'd like to ask, were you to consider donating these three light poles that are at the public works department? They will be a great facelift over at the Legion. I'm looking at moving the flag poles to a different location, and the size is going to be amazing, and being able to be seen from Forside Field, our field, ball field. It'll be, it'll be a great, you know, thing to have, you know, flying, especially when the kids are playing ball. But we've been talking about trying to, you know, clean up the outside of our posts and make it nicer, and flag poles keep coming up. Driving past the Duncan Notice a couple of weeks ago, I saw the pole that snapped off, and the first thing I thought was, that's a green-looking flag pole. So here I am.
Jim, could you say your name and that, though, quick?
Sure, Jim Pirac, thirty-five Phillipon Drive.
Thank you. Any questions?
Full support.
I would say you guys have done a lot for our community. We're not using them for derelict at this point. You should, it's an easy one. Are you, you're all right with that, honestly?
Yeah, absolutely, they're, they're scrap. Yeah. We, we've got one right now, the one you mentioned at Duncan Notice. We're holding on to it until the new one gets put up and the insurance company, or the driver that hit it. Currently, it's owned by an insurance company.
Got it, yeah, two hundred percent support for that.
Thank you.
All right, what's formalized that, your motion please?
Sure, I make a motion to donate three derelict light poles to the American Legion Post two zero two to be used to fly the American flag, the prisoner of war missing in action flag, and the main flag at their post.
Same.
Moving second at all in favor? Motion carries.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, twenty-five, seventy-five. Consideration of any appropriate action on the appointment of Eric Whitney to the Conservation Commission.
We interviewed Eric Whitney just before this meeting. He's an environmental scientist. He previously served at the Farmington Conservation Commission. He owns his own business and has the flexibility to attend meetings. We found him to be appropriate and, and important to this commission, so I make a motion. Does anybody have any comments about what? I make a motion to appoint Eric Whitney to the Conservation Committee.
Same.
Moving second at all in favor? Or zip? All right, twenty-five, seventy-six. Consideration of any appropriate action on approving carryovers from the F Y twenty-five to the F Y twenty-six budget.
Hi, this is what we go through every year. So I, I gave the, my item, and I also gave you the, well, they haven't been audited yet, but they're, on my mind, they're pretty final. So the first one up is the capital project, yeah, capital programs. And that is two million, eight hundred and five thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and some eighty-two cents. And most of that is the construction. It includes the three oh nine, six oh seven that you guys appropriated at, in September of twenty-four. It also includes, that's the big one.
Can you say that number again? I think it's a different number, I'm overstate.
Which one are you?
Two million, eight hundred, five thousand. We have five hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Okay, I just rounded it.
Okay.
It's a rounder.
How does that, I hear, I think, I heard seventy-six.
Oh, no, it's seventy-two. Is that what you have?
No, we have forty-seven. That's the last two numbers.
Forty-seven, so it's, oh, forty, five hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-two cents, so.
Oh, seventy-two cents, got it, okay.
Sorry. We have the second half of Frank J. Wood Bridge. We have the four thousand that is going to be used to help supplement the features of the rec field. The, the, E D had twenty-five thousand dollars left over. The fire capital, that's mostly the, the new truck that's being built.
The ambulance.
Ambulance. We have P W capital, we have a little bit of paving money, and then the off-site T is about forty-seven hundred, and then the C P replacement is six hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents. And we knew that we, for the twenty-six budget, we didn't appropriate any new money for this one, because we knew that we had enough in there. Second item is the professional services and contractual services that's been being used by planning partner, and the one hundred percent source of this money is the tips. That was a hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-five. Round it. The next two are from the central services, and the first one is three thousand and fifty dollars only out of nineteen thousand, approximately. And that is to finish up the G I S software. We had two, we had two pieces, and we paid the first piece already, and this is just the second piece. The next one is the code and zone. We're expecting that we're, we upped it in anticipation that the repo would be finished, and it would have to be incorporated into our laws. And that wasn't done yet, so we carried over the ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars for that one. The P R adjustment is part of what we are using to fund the twenty-six wages that were negotiated. We didn't budget them line by line, because we didn't really want to play our hand out. So that's to be carried forward. Then the final. Nope, that is it. That is the final.
Why aren't you going to the barrel?
It's just the one that, you remember back in March and April, we were talking about publicly fund the raises? Some of it was the line in the new budget, and then we also talked about carrying this forward to help pay for it.
Oh, I see, okay, so it's not appropriating it. Got it.
Any questions?
Cool.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at two different numbers here, one point four five million and another at one point seven million. One is. Oh, that's wrong.
This one is actually three million, though, I'm not comparing anything. I got no question. Housekeeping.
I make a motion to carry all the amounts from fiscal year twenty-five as detailed above.
Same.
Moving second at all in favor? People carries, thank you. All right, twenty-five, seventy-eight. Consideration of any appropriate action to allow the finance office and the town's ambulance contractor to write off the balance of accounts receivable from the service year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and the, and prior, in the amount of sixty-one thousand, nine dollars and five cents.
Did we do seventy-seven?
No, we, well, we skipped seventy-seven.
Well, she's up there if you want.
Oh, 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 okay.
Go back to them.
We skipped, that's fine. So this is just the normal thing we do every year. On, on July first, every year, they give me the, the list of outstanding account receivable by service date, and I break them down by service year, and then we try to clean up one year, every year, to keep it relevant. And, yeah, the, the budget, the budgeted revenue exceeded the, what we, the actual revenue exceeded the budgeted revenue by a hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-six. And we're writing off sixty-one thousand, nine dollars and five cents.
But we still subsidizing going down at this point?
No.
We go there rarely, but cheap.
Maybe one month. That's one, in twenty twenty-two. What's that, in twenty twenty-two? Oh, we recovered probably even seven of the calls up there. So we're basically giving, voting them sixty-one grand, I wrote this on, while I. It was two hundred calls out of our fifteen hundreds, so.
Net revenue you, you mentioned, that's inclusive of what the collection agency collected as well, net of their fees?
Yes, no, it's not net of that fees, we show that fee separately.
Okay.
As a line item in the, in the budget for the fire department.
They don't get paid on the write-offs, right? They only get paid if they collect some.
They don't get paid on cash that comes in the door, and they reduce that. If we have to issue refunds to people, they take that off the following month. So they're not double paying for anybody.
All right.
It's sixty-one grand from voting, and we're like, blood from the stone at this point, so. Wouldn't, then do it.
It was all percentage based, so the chief mentioned there was two hundred something house to Bodenham out of fifteen. So really it'd be two hundred fifteen hundredths of sixty-one would probably be the Bodenham shit. But still blood from the stone.
With that, do we have any other motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to allow the finance office and the town's ambulance contractor to write off the balance of accounts receivable. From the service year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one and prior in the amount of sixty-one thousand, nine dollars and five cents.
Sir.
Moving seconded, all in favor? Or zero? All right, back to the future.
Can I ask one more question after that? Is that write-off because we did receive the revenue that was, that we build out? Right. And that strictly came from one town or?
No, no, it's from individuals, like all individuals.
Yes, okay, so we were covering all of Bodenham in point twelve. A good portion of Bodenham. Because they didn't get a bonus there.
Right. I didn't know if it was the town that was not making order from that comment, so. I get it now, thank you.
No, we didn't let them know. So did, are you going to take over this? Or do you want me to do the outline or what do you want me to do?
Yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll take it over once we're all in start to.
Okay. All right, twenty-five seventy-seven, consideration and any appropriate action on determining the amount of surplus to. Be expanded on the FY twenty-six budget.
So throughout the budget process, we were shooting for a net increase in the tax commitment, which I should clarify. Does not necessarily, necessarily mean anyone's particular tax bill. Um, because our assessor adjusts property values each year based on the market value so that we don't have the issue some other towns have of. They wait ten years and then they have the massive adjustments. Um, but we tried to keep the next, net increase to be collected from everyone to between three to four percent. Um, when we prepared the budget, that was where we were shooting for. We also planned that, or the school would have a five percent increase and the county would have a five percent increase. Um, we, our budget, we actually, to try to get us in our target rate, um, was, would have been, or is. Two point four percent lower this year than last year because we cut back on capital ordens. Um, unfortunately, the way reality played out, topsome share of the MSAD seventy-five budget ended up being an eight point two percent increase. And topsome share of the county budget was a seven point six percent increase. Um, which means if we stuck to our original plan. Um, or we can't stick to our original plan because they're, they were more than we were at plan for. Um, last year we spent two point three million of our surplus to reduce the tax rate. We spent a significant amount last year. Um, part of the thinking behind that was because of the fact that the senior tax stabilization was expiring. So about twenty percent of our town was gonna, in effect, be getting two tax year increases in one year. Um, but we, that number we knew wasn't sustainable and we don't, we wouldn't have that to keep going forward with. Um, you have a fund balance policy that you have passed, so you could certainly change it if you wanted, but your current policy. Says that we must retain at least sixteen point seven percent. Our money to cover sixteen point seven percent of the upcoming year's general fund operating expenditures. And we cannot retain more than eighteen percent of unallocated, uh, surplus till the next year. So if we used one point four five million of our surplus, that would, uh, get us. An increase of about six point two percent. Um, if we use one point seven million of our surplus, that gets it down to seventeen point six one percent. Uh, so, obviously you can pick any number in between that, um, or you could change the policy if you wanted. Uh, I thought about trying to hold firm and recommend because that doesn't seem fair to expect the towns. Capital improvements, everything else to suffer for the sake of the schools and the county. Um, and make a strong argument to let's, let's, um, only spend the one point four five million. Uh, but, given the fact that everything else in people's lives is a lot more expensive, I'm not gonna make that argument. Um, I'll recommend that we go with, uh, the one point seven million. Um, and but the end, I've got a caveat here that if people do not want their taxes to increase significantly next year. They really need to pay attention to the school and county budget process. Uh, because we'll be at slightly above our minimum. So unless the policy was changed or something, we're not gonna have the money, significant money to put toward next year's budget. Um, so, that said, happy to answer questions. Assessor Hennessy and Finance Director Ricker are also here.
Seems like the financial aspect of the way Topson operates has been pretty. Stable. We have also some things that are getting paid off next year, uh, like this building next door where our funds are getting cleared out. Um, the, like you said, the one unexplainable thing is school and county and those seem to be. Nowhere's near what we try to project. They seem to be, the past couple of years at least, school's been seven percent or more. Um. If we were to anticipate the same kind of increase again from then. I gotta think of how I wanna word this because if they do it again, basically. Should we allot a smaller amount in planning for the future so that we don't have to have a large increase next year if the school does it? With, and slash county, or would it be still wiser to go with a larger amount? Like keep more in our fund balance, I assume, the higher end of that percentage.
I don't quite know if I understand the question, but if what you were saying was, should we be planning? For bigger increases for the school and the county in the future?
Or the ones that they've consistently had over the past few years?
If we planned for those increases, um, we would either have to significantly cut back on things like paving. Um, or we're not gonna be able to have as much staff as we have either. Um, I don't think we have excess staff and I don't think we're doing excess paving. So I guess my attitude is, we need to try to be as fiscally prudent and responsible as we can for ourselves. But we need to insist that the school and the county do the same thing.
And I guess, and I agree with that a hundred percent. My thought was more about what we're transferring over from that surplus, that fund balance. We have the range of, was it sixteen to eighteen percent? Is that what?
Sixteen point seven of the next year's expenditures is the minimum.
Minimum.
Eighteen is the maximum.
Got it.
Um, last year, we actually had, even once we did the two point three, we had about three hundred thousand that. You put into a reserve fund for the Tedford Road sidewalk.
Right.
Huge project because we knew that project is gonna be in the neighborhood of two million dollars when it comes.
So if we were to keep the eighteen percent in that fund balance, just so that we had reserves or. Potential other increases while not trying to keep or stifle the topsome taxpayers, the responsibilities that we have to them. What would, what would we allocate to keep eighteen percent in there?
It's the difference between those two numbers, which is about two point, two hundred fifty thousand.
Okay.
So it's not a huge number.
So one point four five million is keeping at eighteen percent and then the one point seven was down at that seventeen point six or sixteen?
The one point four five.
Is sixteen point eight three?
That's, it's a sixteen point eight three.
Bottom of that, okay. I'm just trying to clearly get this in my head.
And the one point seven.
Is the eighteen.
Is the eighteen.
Good, yep.
It's seventeen point six four, right?
Hmm.
Sixteen point eight, sixteen point eight three. And then the one point seven million?
One point seven million is sixteen point eight three and the, uh, one point four, uh, one point four five zero. Is seventeen sixty-one. So the more that you use, uh, the lower it's going to go.
All right.
And.
Yeah. The numbers are flip flopping here, that's why this question, it's saying if we do the one point four five million, that will end up with sixteen point eight three. If we use one point seven, we'll end up with seventeen point.
Yeah, see, you're right.
Over, same.
So that's why, yeah, in our, in our, in our information and the memo, um, it, the numbers are flip flopped, so. We just need to change that.
Yeah, it's the worst.
Yeah.
Well, and as Senator Tepel said in our last meeting, I mean, I don't think they have total confidence in what. The, uh, state subsidy is going to be for them, so.
Dan, one of you guys is gonna have to volunteer your time being like kind of the advisory committee this year. Yeah, someone's gonna do it.
And, and just.
No, I've been up. I stand for my, my decision.
That is a good way to at least try to influence budget. I mean, we have a little bit more say over that, than we do the school.
It's, it's certainly tricky because there's part of me. That feels like we know that the school budget and county budget goes out of our control and much larger than normal and. I wanna, in my mind, prepare for that because. If it goes too much higher than tax increases, it's go way through the roof, um, a lot higher than we've seen, but. Where do we use, how much do we use to balance that so that we can still take care of our obligations to the town, Topson, but also prepare for. What we don't know, essentially, using what we do know from the past and using the patterns that we've seen. I almost feel like we should leave a little bit more in there.
Take the minute, basically, you wanna basically stay on the high end once we've used the surplus.
Part of me feels that way, yes.
I agree.
I, I, I think we should go with the one point seven one. I think, same.
I think we're all agreeing with them.
No, I think we are too.
No worries.
That should change the numbers, that's right.
Wouldn't that be weird?
So with the, with the right numbers, uh, so with the right results. If you spent one point seven million, that'll be spending more of the surplus so that it would get the tax rate down to six. Sorry, if we get the six surplus cap down to sixteen point eight three. And the net tax increase would be around six point two. If you spend less of the surplus, the one point four five, you would have the reserve. At seventeen point six one percent and the net commitment would increase about five point one percent.
So we're still on that cap?
Both, um, are within your policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the bigger number is still within the cap and the, the lower number is still within the cap.
Yeah, I guess my point is like if we, we could go with the bottom. Or we could go somewhere in the middle, but we're not gonna be saving enough money to say that we have a full fund balance at this point. Because it'll be seventeen point six one percent. So either way, it's gonna be less than.
Well, it's a quarter.
Maximum that is there. So, I mean, I'm, not hard, we could just change it too, right?
The only, only caveat I put, if you change the policy on the low front, you might be looking at, in the future, things like tax, tax anticipations.
You're really into that. Yeah, I would not ever consider that. That's just a joke. Both of you, start forward. The word of the window. I'm gonna throw out a motion.
Always do.
I propose that we, or excuse me, I move that we utilize one point seven million dollars and, and allocate surplus to OSEP and then. Tax.
Second.
Very emotional. Seconded, all in favor?
I don't know. Just three of you, it'll be, it'll be pass fun, I don't know.
What's that?
He's, he's not buying, yes.
You're abstaining.
Abstaining, yeah.
Okay.
There's, there's enough to pass, I just, I don't know how I feel about it.
Well, the other thing is that we don't know whether revenue is solid or not either, so. They, nothing they said in that meeting two weeks ago, it meaning confidence that they actually know where the money's going or coming from.
So, so this is using more of the money?
Yeah.
Right, well, that's.
And Justin, what do you think as far as property values next year? Is it still gonna be the same direction or is it plateauing?
I do not have a crystal ball.
Justin, could you?
Um, I'm gonna see time with that sir. Yes, the Russian, I can forget that in the future. Um, I will say that when I was reviewing sales in the last. Six months, we made. Some prices are still going above, but they're not nearly as steep a climb as we saw in the prior two months. I'm interested, we might be reaching a point where we're kind of at a time where they can turn another way. But we have not reached that point yet. So far, sales that have come through are still in decline, just at a slower pace.
And the listings I see from Topson, they're still crazy prices.
That's true.
For newer properties.
Essentially everywhere.
Yeah.
It goes from. There, I wanna say Washington Bank is like declining all last twelve months, I can't remember exactly. I pulled the realtor's report, like on second quarter.
Yeah.
Uh, but generally, mid-escalation is still. We're up five percent from April to April from last year, whereas in prior four years, that would have been more like ten, fifteen percent jump.
And the unit sold is pretty comparable, right?
Unit count has been relatively stable.
Yeah.
So that with the volume of sales that developed, there's definitely longer times in the market, we are definitely seeing these come up. We had a very long time where I, you know. Between the time I left on Friday and the time I came on Monday, a check was on listing service for us, stuff had come on and gone under contract over the weekend.
Yeah.
That's why I'm really not case anymore. Stuff was on there for at least a week's time, it was definitely changed for track.
Right. And the houses have looked kinda iffy, aren't getting above the asking price anymore.
There, there is enough time for people to do things like schedule. Wires inspections, actually look for some issues, which was really not the case. So, certainly we need to get a little more balance between buyers and sellers market. Whether that real book will really churn out to a more affordable housing index, I can't say that that's. Anytime of near future for us.
Yeah, it's only part of the equation too, right? Interest rates have to do something positive, so.
Although interestingly, we've had, a lot of what means that several years has been, and most of buyers come from outer state. That aren't actually make the mortgage. Equity from sales somewhere else.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of cash.
Wow. All right, just something to think about next year.
Iron Cape's are definitely going down.
Especially with the force I grew.
That's the one that's worth that meat.
Yeah, all of course, I was like a sort of flood.
Hey, yeah.
All right, we're past that one, all right, so we're good.
All right.
All right, we're done with that. Our last one is twenty-five seventy-nine, consideration and any appropriate action in setting a public hearing. For the Ford Union Park TIF application, placing approval on the November twenty-fifth ballot and recommending approval.
So as you may remember, a couple of months ago, you directed me to work with the town's attorney and the attorney for developers to put together the TIF application. Um, the draft was a separate agenda item, or not agenda item, but it was prepared, um, provided to you, not put into this packet itself. Uh, there's still, it's still being finalized, but it's at the point now it's minor tweaking. Um, the details of it, of it are, it's a thirty-year affordable housing TIF. So the units that are gonna be guaranteed be affordable will be so for thirty years. Um, they have up the number of units in the building by three, so it's now gonna have a hundred and eighty-three units. Um, of course, all this is, it still hasn't gone through the planning board or stuff, so this is, the plan at this point is for it to have a hundred and eighty-three units. Hundred and twenty-two of which would be market rate. Um, ten of which are gonna be affordable to someone who makes no more than eighty percent of the area median income. Fifty-one will be affordable to someone making no more than a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. For the term of the thirty years, the developer would be, get back sixty percent of the property tax. The town will keep forty percent of the property tax. Um, the town attorney believes that he can make this happen, um, but he's. In the process of submitting it to main housing authority to make sure they're okay with it as well, the developer's okay with it. Um, this section is that, uh, of the, the units. They're gonna be allocated in order of priority, first to people who are working in Topson. Second, to people who work within fifteen miles of Topson. The town attorney said it's important that we were using the word working rather than living, uh, because he said he thought it would be a constitutional violation. If you had to already live in Topson, uh, to be able to get the benefit. But since anyone could come take a job in Topson, then he believes that one does pass constitutional mustard. Um, but he's also wants to get the blessing of main city housing authority before we formally submit the application, so he's gotta get the preview from them. Um, the things that in the application we could use the town share for would be school costs. Um, that could quickly use up our entire share of our taxes, so we would be able to maximize that TIF. Whereas some of our other TIFs right now, um, we don't come anywhere close to maximizing. Um, other possible things that we wanted to put in as options, so it gives us things we can do with our budget. Our reserves for a replacement ladder truck, the theory behind that is a ladder's nice even for a one-story building. Because you can fight the fire from above too, but it becomes really essential for rescuing people in a four-story building. This is gonna be, uh, one of the first four-story buildings in town, uh, so it's, we think we can make a good argument that. Um, setting up a reserve for a ladder truck is a legitimate use of some of this tax money. Um, other potential things we could use it for, if we chose, would be sidewalk improvements on Union Street. Water and sewer improvements, a pro-rata share. Um, that area of town, as you heard in your infrastructure study that, uh, TDI commissioned about a month ago. Uh, was likely to need a sewer pumping station on Can-Am to develop the Crooker Spot or, uh, this area. So we could certainly justify spending some of the tax money towards that. So we could certainly justify spending some of the tax money towards that if we chose. Um this property as an aside, it's currently in a TIF that um encompasses other properties on Route one ninety six, and that is one of the existing purposes that could have that money go to is water and sewer improvements. Um and then finally, an option would be that we could put some of the money in a fund to assist with building other affordable housing. So we believe we've got five good purposes that could use up all the potential town share of the tax money, so that we could maximize the benefit of the TIF to the town. Um so to make this happen, we could do a special town meeting. Um but in order to basically save the money and expense of a special town meeting, we thought since we're voting in November anyway, why don't we put it on that ballot? So in order to put it on that ballot, we need a vote from you tonight to authorize putting it on the ballot. Um the ballot question that you saw in your materials, you notice it's kinda makes a two-page ballot, there's a lot, it's dense, it's the same information we would have had in the town meeting warrant. Um and it's, because of that, we think it's important that also have a recommendation, which you usually do on your town meeting warrant items. Um because a lot of people aren't, are gonna look at that. We tend to have educational materials on the website, and we also are gonna talk about the, the public hearing in, in a minute. Um but we think it's important to have a recommendation from you, people are counting on you to look over this stuff and tell them what you think. So we're also asking for a recommendation that it pass um as part of your motion tonight. The next step of this is that uh in order to have an affordable housing TIF, you have to have a public hearing on the proposed TIF. So we're proposing that that be set for your next meeting at six thirty in the morning. Uh sorry, six thirty P M.
You got my eyes up.
Uh so it'd be the beginning of your regular select board meeting, and probably would take ten or fifteen minutes, depending on if anyone shows up with questions or comments on it. But that would satisfy the requirements statute. Early voting would start in October, then people could begin voting on it in early voting and through the day, Election Day, and we would see how it goes.
Just to clarify, if the people of Topson decide to vote against this on the ballot, then it's done.
Right.
Okay.
The project may or not be done, but so the TIF is done.
The TIF is done.
In that format.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Arrow explanation mark.
We'll take a motion.
Well.
I'll do it there. I propose a motion to include before you remark, that park TIF warrant article prepared by Attorney Sase on November, on the November fifth town meeting election ballot instead of public hearing is in the notice provided by Attorney Sase for September eighteenth, twenty twenty five, six thirty P M at one hundred Janes Street.
And then the recommendation.
Can we do, can we do that separate?
Sure.
If you want.
I would like.
Okay, three on the most.
Second.
Move the second, all in favor? Okay. You wanna make?
Oh, I just wanted to vote on that separately, 'cause I'm, I'm again looking at a lot of the paperwork. Um I know part of the feeling is that we're gonna bring in an extra amount of money that we're not bringing in, but I'm still not convinced that taxpayers aren't going to be the ones that end up subsidizing portions of unintended consequences. Um I'm in favor of ought not to pass.
Just to be interest of providing full information, the developer has told me that if there was not a recommendation in support of this, that they'd probably pull it, because they think there's a lot of weight that goes into your recommendation.
Um I say that because of the things that I've read, but eh I feel like with every constituent that I've discussed this with over the past three months, overwhelmingly I've heard that it is not something that they want. And I would have to stick with that from just the people that I've spoken to, I think. In deciding, you know, a lot of that is based on the what ifs, you know, the we question whether or not traffic will be a problem on that, and we're sure that it won't be, but eh we really can't know those things, but I think people fear that it will be, and it overwhelmingly will be. Um and the, the language of affordable housing and some of the other language seems to be not really fully accurate, or maybe a little bit misleading to some people as they read through it. Um it certainly was for me for a while. But there, there was just a few things like that that we, that keep coming up, that we had to keep coming back on to keep negotiating with as far as with the developer themselves. And just again, in my conversations of after every meeting, having conversations with people, they're just like, we don't want that, we just don't want that. So I'm gonna have to stick with what I've heard from at least the constituents that I've spoken with, and stick with ought not to pass.
Uh I'd like to address that, this topic. Uh I'm gonna vote um ought to pass. Um and the reason I wanna do that is I really think that we trust the people of Topson to make the decision, 'cause that's why we're putting it on the ballot, so we would put it on the ballot if we didn't think it should pass. Um it may or may not pass, and it's really gonna be up to the people of Topson, so I would vote ought to pass.
Total respect, where you're coming from. Um but it's interesting, the conversation that's had with people have been in favor generally, um and that is because these folks have actually moved the dial and negotiated. I think if we kept this at a hundred and twenty percent of AMI like the original proposed, uh I would be favored, they were garbage. Uh but they have offered a number of concessions, um it's still not, isn't ideal though. Uh but they need to make money. Uh it's an expensive, large project. Um and I'm totally not dismissing any of your concerns, especially the people who spoke to them, uh but just the way I've interpreted this, at least with folks I've spoken with, that this is it's, it's in many cases exciting, uh because several of them are living over in that favorite area over near Can-Am, um and slowly getting evicted uh over you know, every couple of weeks when they just had to flip into a condo, so for, you know, three times what it's actually worth. Um and throwing them out the street, and they're the ones who work in Topson, so it was exciting to them uh that there might be other options uh that they can be near the front of the line too. Um that's interesting, where the living things, uh that would be really, really bad if we put, like yeah.
Absolutely. Yes, you just want me to. Totally see legal issues around that, for sure. Yeah, that's where I am.
I am in support of this project, so the people I've talked to are mostly families that have adult children who can't afford to live here. And, you know, we need, you know, take some action, you know, and this may not be perfect for, for that demographic or any other one for that matter, but at least it sets what the pricing is based on a metric we all understand, so. And I think if we move forward with this one, then, you know, I think it says, you know, at least Topson is willing to consider these type of projects, and, you know, hopefully we learn something out of this as well, so that you know, as the market is changing, and, you know, certain part of population is, is gonna get smaller. You know, we need to prepare, you know, this town as far as, you know, grinding accommodations that, you know, people are gonna want, and at the same time, hopefully they'll find a job to work at the same time, so that they don't have to go out and pollute the air like they are now, so that's my rationale.
Boss, do we really wanna be like Cumberland? No, we wanna be better than Cumberland. Absolutely. Well, and that, I think that's also another, another point is that there's a, there's a lot of apartment units that are soon approved through the planning board already, so we can kind of already expect that these are coming to our town, whether we like it or not. Um and I'm personally afraid that we're opening a door at a sixty forty split, that other developers are thinking that we can do that as well, and if, if we don't, then it's, it's I don't know if it's shame on us or not, but it's just, it's not consistent, and I would prefer if they're gonna come, let's take a hundred percent of it, uh because it is market rate. I, if it was affordable, like truly all affordable housing, and I know that's hard to do, um I would be a hundred percent on board personally um on that, and but the, the workforce, I can't wrap my head around the rents and I just don't know how, who is making that kind of money in order to afford that. Um and I know my kids are getting to that point where, you know, another few years of graduating high school, they're gonna be on their own, doing their own thing, and I'm, and I hear what Roland's saying about adult children not being able to afford to live here, but I don't think they're gonna be able to afford to live in that building either, you know, at three thousand dollars a month. Uh that's no different than the mortgages that people are paying on houses here, so that, those are all part of the conversations that I've had, and I think it's a lot of people that wanna be fiscally responsible, um knowing and, and then also seeing what, down the road, this is the thirty year TIF. A lot in our town is gonna change over thirty years. This is just the first of many things that are changing very rapidly. And I do feel in conversations that although change is inevitable, and it is the only constant in the world, the only thing that we can control is the pace of that change, and does it change too quickly, too rapidly? I E. Do we put up six of these buildings in our town in a four-year period of time? Or do we, do they all come in spaced out so people can get adjusted and used to it? Think that's, changes is scary for a lot of people in our town, especially the, the factor of people that have been here either generations or lifetime, myself included, who lived in this town for forty years. Um I've seen the changes happen. And it's a big change. It, it is a big change and a big pill for people to swallow, so those are, again, I'm just beating a dead horse at this point, I just wanna make those, those positions known publicly so that they're part of the conversation.
I disagree, that means we have to basically start dehumanizing each other on Facebook, right, according to protocol, progressive protocol, like.
Never.
Ryan's not human, and he's evil, and you can do the same thing, that's how that works, right?
You know, I would say that we've sat on this board for a long time, and we really haven't had any disagreements. We've had great conversations, we can disagree wholeheartedly.
Oh, you know, James said it, twenty twenty five.
And it's totally fine.
It's not going to be, so not to worry.
This, this may be the first time that I take a stance against the board, you know, I'm usually, I, I'm, I'm in favor of the things that we discuss and um but for this one, I think it's worthy of me taking a stance on. That's it.
Well, here's the other thing, just having lived through a couple of these housing corrections, you know, one which hit Topson pretty badly in ninety one. Um you know, based on what's going on in Washington, we could have a correction like that in the next two years easily, and those prices you're talking about may not even be valid anymore. You know, of course, unemployment rate could be up by fifteen percent too, and that kinda offsets that, but there's, they don't, this is one variable, so yeah, I'm just willing to see what happens, and I, I, I completely understand your point, I mean, there there are changes, and some people adapt to them quicker than others, so uh but, you know, you, like you said, it's one facet of what happens in this town. I mean, you could have a couple of big employers leave, you could have a, a big employer to come in. All of that's gonna contribute to things like traffic as well, whether they live here or not, it's still gonna happen. So what do we do now? Do we take a phone?
Well, I think you had, you made a motion, but didn't.
Uh no, I didn't, I'm waiting for someone to make a motion that it ought to pass.
Um I make a motion that we add the board recommendation to ought to pass to the Union Park TIF on the November twenty fifth, uh November twenty twenty five ballot.
Second.
Motion, it's moved inside to the down there? Close? Three to one. Good conversation.
Have to have it, yeah, gotta, gotta do it. All right, let's get on.
You make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
All favor. Get the audience on it too, to the.